We start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Do you want to know how to do this?
Nope. I guess the first thing we need to do is approve the meeting minutes.
Just a second.
Oh, we did the president. Let's do that.
Can I make a motion in a few minutes?
Second.
All of it?
Huh?
You said all of it.
Oh, all of it.
Yeah?
So approve the bills for February twenty twenty-four.
I wish to approve the bills.
I'll second it.
I'll do that. Okay. We need to appoint a new council president.
I don't know how this works.
Yeah, so I mean, one to nominate, so I think you're president right now, right? So all the council president does is if if Rex is gone for some reason, then a champion sign or somebody has to run the meeting, that's what the council president does.
You're in charge?
And so she's in charge.
We're not there.
And so you can nominate Pam if you want to have her again, if you want to nominate somebody else.
But because it was a reelection for her, right?
Every year.
You're going to say, no, we can't.
And I can second that?
No, no, you can't second.
He's gonna have to. Are you okay with seconding Pam being president? All in favor?
In favor.
So we gotta do a cost of living increase for the utility bill. So Laura probably will be talking about that now.
So I just laid out, we talked about expenses versus collections last time. So I just laid out options, option one, two, three, four, or leave it the way it is. But our garbage rates did go up. So you can see like option one, they're both three percent, but laid out differently to accommodate. The second group of numbers would be like the yearly difference. In each category. And then Idaho Supreme, I did it separately. If you want to give them an increase, if you so choose to increase or not, I'll give you.
So what's our, is this, what's our, how much are we, did our garbage go up?
So like the garbage went up, it's seventeen dollars thirty-two cents. I can go double check that number.
That's okay. I wrote that, so it's just one. So now it's seventeen thirty-two?
Yeah.
But we only pay seventeen. But that's how much it costs, the seventeen thirty-two?
So what, right now, you guys raised it last year five dollars, because it was twelve, and then it went to seventeen. And now their rate to us is seventeen thirty-two.
Okay.
So.
It has sewer, water government, or that's, I mean, our cost?
Electricity, things like that, utility bills to run it, yes, they're increasing. And then, just like I showed you last month when we talked about it, like sewer, we were in a deficit, almost twenty thousand. Part of that is because they're sending stuff to FERC. But even taking that out, you're still in the deficit a little bit.
Okay. Does this option four give us a little bit of a buffer at the end?
Yeah. Well, yes and no. It depends on how much we have to send to FERC.
Okay.
And we're talking to those guys.
And expenses throughout the year that are seen.
But then, well, it might give us something of a buffer.
Yeah.
And then say, so we do say, I'm just hypothetical right now, so say we do option four this year. We can turn around and do another option four next year.
Yeah, but I think that there needs to be some assessing, and we were just talking to those two men here who do grants and stuff. And they kind of gave us their opinions on sewer increase, or rate increases right now. And increasing the rates, he's like, if you do a project, you're probably gonna have to increase your rate, which may make people mad to do one and one. I did put out in a newsletter that we will be assessing what the future needs, and we'll get it again next year. So I think people are kind of prepared for that. I haven't heard a negative feedback from anybody that's come in. They all get it, so.
It's been neglected for a long time.
I know, that's why I would, I think we're gonna have to increase it again next year.
We have to increase it to the max that we can without going all the extra miles or anything.
Right.
So we have something to increase a little bit, and then we're gonna redo that after a while. Everything has to be evaluated, like it's been totally just neglected for a long time.
I mean, besides, if you take out like the garbage, nothing else has been looked at since two thousand eighteen, and that was almost sewer, from what I can tell on the past.
So we're almost guaranteed that we're in deficit of everything, because twenty eighteen prices are a long time. And they're not coming back.
So we'll work on the evaluations of all the water consumption and stuff like that.
Like that will be part of what we expect from Brian, is to get meters so that we can be reading them, understanding what's going, who's using what.
Nobody has a clue how much water to be consumed.
We've been visiting with Robert Dial, who has a lot of expertise in water consumption. And he had kind of made a suggestion in the future to think about, you know, if you have like a base flat rate, give him so many gallons per month, and then if you go over that, then maybe you need a back. Who, like back household more? Because some people do use their water a whole lot more than others.
Oh, I agree.
So.
So I want to be watering all day, all night for two days.
So things to think about in the future. But until we start getting data and knowing what's happening, I don't think we can make that decision.
It should have been started last fall. So we would have an ADFR now, at least for fall winter use, but nothing happened. So that will be on the, to get that agenda soon. Because we need to read that now, why why nobody's watering gardens and all these things. And so we have a base for winter, and then spring, summer comes, we have a base for that. And then fall, when it comes into, yes, we'll have a proof of it there. Then we'll see actually where we're at, what's being consumed, how much everything is costing, and the evaluation can happen.
And like I said, nobody, like, nobody's complaining.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So correct.
Yep.
One of the things that I, I just got a call from, they only ask for yearly, is a reading on our flow meter. And the flow meter that goes in the city, I can read that once a week. You will know exactly what the city uses on a monthly basis. I mean, not home by home, but if that helps.
You're correct. But I also think that we know that there are people that are guilty of leaving their sprinklers in the summer twenty-four seven. Is it fair that they pay the same rate when we're like, how many to raise everybody? I don't know.
But I, that might help you right now in the wintertime, where we're still trying to get some of these other meters working.
Yeah.
And so I.
What's the total outcome?
I could give you a, that would be a week by week flow reading of what's going in during the winter months.
I think as we're, as we all know, because we're all getting started with this, we'll figure everything out, start recording everything so that we can get it to be an accurate reading of everything.
And that's one thing that Robert did point out, is we really should be doing every reading of slow meters every week.
Well, turn the, sort of off, probably got that a lot.
Probably a whole bunch.
So, and everybody that's come in, they get it. And the cost of living hasn't been one person that I've talked to. Maybe you've heard different, I don't know.
Yeah. I just, to your, to your point there, I think water meters also help alert people, talking about your, you know, your water, you should scrub into FERC. A lot of people like your toilet here probably didn't know water was running. Well, that's just going to your union, that possibly running, you know, if you're multiplying that, like, all of your connections. Most folks, if they don't, not only just don't know.
Or don't care.
Right, and so, I mean, I think that could go to also some of the money that you're spending sending to FERC, that you can get some of that leaking, I guess is the word to.
Now, last October, there was somebody that came in the office, and they said just that, like, their house, their line from the meter to their house was leaking.
Yeah.
And she's like, we only caught it because we happened to be watching the meter. It was supposed to be off, but it was still spinning. We need to figure out.
And those will pick up, those will pick up a cost of living. You can literally watch the, like, toilet, like, the flapper leaking, and then, you know, where it'll stop it, and then you'll kind of, you know, you can watch that turn on and on. But I think, you know, if you got everybody kind of on a conservancy like that through the winter, your meters are gonna tell you and help you help your wastewater situation. Not just, you know, power savings on producing the water, but it could be wastewater savings too. You have.
We agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city maintenance shop toilet there totally leaking one hundred percent, like, just flowing. And, you know, I'm like, guy, what do you, you know, wow, I should know. I'm like, you're supposed to be the guy, it's in charge of this. Anyways, it's fixed, and we fixed it. Bonding toilet fixed it. He's good, okay. He fixed it. All right. Anything else?
Well, we need to decide.
What are we deciding?
I'm just trying to educate.
Oh, the raise. So what do you think, do you wanna do a?
And really, like, you could make another option, if we just raise garbage, and we see where the water from over here, or six months, or?
We're already in the deficit with the water. And I think.
We weren't in a deficit with water, it was just barely squeaking by.
Yeah.
Sewer was a deficit, which surprised me.
Well, I do think you should raise Idaho Supreme, I mean, we're all facing.
The reason, I'll tell you the reason why I left that separate is Robert Dial looking in was, that was a lot to them. But he's like, you're getting it, you're getting it. So did you raise them, I don't know.
Yes.
We can't just squeak by, because when we have faulty something, we're sorry, there's no money there, we're just paying the bill.
So if you do a raise, you do it across the board?
There's a lot of things that we need to do for the water department, and so that will just help the water department a little bit right now.
And if Supreme doesn't want to do it, they can find another option. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, why should everybody else subsidize that, subsidize that?
Yeah, we'll give it up, bring it up. So I think, myself personally, I think that it's in order because of the cost of living has gone up. Everything has gone up, and there has been no adjustment every year. And every year, there should be some cost of living adjustment.
I agree.
I don't know if you have already, but there is some great study data out there for this area. I don't know if you guys have.
I was looking at last year's list, I haven't seen a new one.
Do you have an opinion on option three? I do, but it's a silly reason.
You wanna keep it even?
No, yes, yes. I like option three, because instead of, I mean, one oh four ninety.
One oh four.
One oh four ninety versus one oh four?
One oh four. No, I've asked people, would it bother you if there was change? I can use, you can round it up, give me an extra ten cents, but then after ten months, you have an extra dollar on the bill.
You're stuck at the one four, it's beautiful. One oh five, and you have a four period.
Yeah.
Well, you said four point nine, that's why I did that.
You had to, one oh five, we'd be. We could go to like four point nine one, huh?
So from my point of view.
I'm kind of like Pam, I think option three just makes sense.
Because of the way I have to break it down on the computer, the one oh three, and keeping it all this one dollar across the board, that makes my math easier, but.
I'm fine with option three. That would probably plan.
Well, it doesn't matter. Like, I mean, we do, I think we do need to cover a little bit more of that.
Well, I completely agree, because we're, we're going to have some kind of surplus, so when something goes wrong, we have to help you fix it. Because nobody wants to be hit with a huge bill to help fix whatever goes wrong.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things to fix, that's the point too.
Exactly.
And so we're gonna get some stuff going.
Hands can kick down, or wave it off too.
Okay, so option three?
Do you guys have an opinion?
So what are we talking, an increase like five bucks, ten bucks?
How the mic paper?
Four dollars.
Four dollars.
Three or four?
Four dollars.
Make it five, come on.
Can't.
Can't. Because then it would have to go to a public hearing.
We'd have to put it in the paper, which would cost us five hundred bucks.
I would say go with the most you can without having to go to public hearing. And if you, since sewer is the one that has the most, has a deficit, so you'll one for, one for, one, one for another, and the rest put on sewer. Yeah. You can always adjust where it's going later on.
You have to stay within that percentage, don't you?
Yeah.
Was it sewer that was in deficit?
So what's the amount, you can raise it.
But then this, if it's current forty-four.
You can make it forward, man. But that's not, that's option three, raise it forward.
I was thinking, you wanna raise it one to the top.
Four percent? I mean, you don't have a bigger figure.
Yeah, yeah, we don't.
Oh, it is, okay. But four dollars, you didn't increase it now. I don't care about percent sign. Well, it's four bucks. I only care what she says I have to write the check for her, hundred more. That's easy. If I remember to write.
Hundred forty-nine.
Plus my tip.
Would you settle for flowers or a pizza?
No, I don't like that.
So, question, option three that they're talking about, does that pay the bills for all of them? Is that enough garbage? Is that enough sewer? Is that enough water?
I mean, it depends on what the yearly expenses are. You know, like, we weren't planning on diverting to FERC, but that was a big expense.
Well, it, it is, and if we have a wet spring, you divert FERC even more. If you don't, you don't, however, let me just say, back in the day when I was on the council, FERC was spotted bringing their trucks up and dumping them in our sewer streets at night, when nobody could see them. They got caught like three or four times. Well, that increases your union, and we sent a lot of FERC to them, because.
That's a load of crap.
Yeah.
So. Wait, we have a solution to the problem, I think.
Have, have we quit the idea of putting a, what is it, third pond or fourth pond out there?
Let's not jump.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in just a minute.
That's okay, what I'm saying, it's, it's not off the table, totally, then.
We'll talk about it just a minute.
Okay.
They're, they're still talking about it.
So we need to figure out this range real quick, and are you two disagreed?
Well, Laura proposed option three, do you wanna make a motion?
A motion for option three?
Does anybody agree, disagree?
Okay, just secondary.
Okay.
All in favor? Check.
Option three wins.
Okay. So we're gonna increase four dollars. So, and we're gonna continue to evaluate all of our water systems. Okay, next is city credit card, so the city needs money to do stuff.
Actually, next is a big contract. Well, so roll that over to next month.
Okay.
So I ended up having two unexpected trips, so I didn't get a chance to meet with the sheriff. I just wanted to make sure that he and I are on the same page.
So you just do your job.
So I did my job, so our schedules didn't, didn't jive with my. Now you go to city credit card, sorry.
So it was suggested that we get one, like, when Brian goes off to the conference that we've signed up for, he's gonna need paper, hotel, fuel, those kinds of things. Plus, just being here, can do options to get paid, not a huge one, just a small one that one that I need to get. I didn't know if I needed your permission, but I figured I probably should put it on here and just keep it transparent.
Make the motion.
Moving on up, we're trying to email.
Yeah!
Email, pretty soon.
I remember years ago, they had a card, but it was left out with you. It would just make her seem.
I don't have a problem with it, I just think that it's at the standing age, you gotta have something.
Okay.
What I mentioned to Robin is you just have that now as part of your monthly bill, so everybody sees the statement.
Yeah.
Yeah. And receipts are required.
Yes.
If you don't turn in a receipt, then you're responsible for the charge.
Exactly. Do we have to? Motion letter, or is that?
I don't think so, I think she was this informed.
I don't know.
No, I think, I think it's in the mayor's curfew, so I think it's just more of an informational.
We just all want to be on the same page. Okay.
So we're the credit card that gives points back, right? And some of them didn't sell them though.
And then we can go on vacation.
I was just thinking, with the mayor and Robin just appeared to Hawaii, we know how they're going.
No, we probably would go to Hawaii, we would go up and around. We've been to Hawaii, that was not bad.
You realize that's garbage, and the interest they charge, when they say they give you money back, that's yes.
Well, if we're paying it off every month, we wouldn't be paying a whole lot for the interest.
Maybe their credit card with zero interest for X amount.
Is there such a thing as one for municipalities, that they can be a great, really bank through, as a city?
Our main bank is Bank of Commerce, but we do have a sewer, a little account over here at Connections.
We like Black, but Black, Black is a hundred percent credit card, insurance, everything we can.
Does it matter, like?
They're through Zion's.
Can we go through Connections, even though, because that would be easier for me.
We, we use one called, it's called Bill, and it's, it's a recent card, but it's hooked directly, like, you have to pay it every two weeks or every month. But it's, it's all on your, if I was like, all the receipts are put on your phone, and you can create budgets. So as he's buying, then he puts it in the budgets, out of your phone. And then it like, so you can track where everything went already. It's a really cool platform, we use it all the time.
Oh, what?
It's called Bill, and they don't charge you anything, like.
Bills or bill?
Bill, B-I-L-L. It used to be called Dibby, but Bill just bought. So if you Google Bill or Dibby, but they, they give you a credit line, and they don't charge you to use it, and they do give you points, but you can use those to buy tools and stuff like that with the points. You can get cash back to buy things for the city too. And so we have some other municipalities use it too, and they, it's really nice, because you track everything, your operator, whoever's working with you, can just take a picture over their phone, and the receipts, and all the notes, and everything's right there, and you know, I paid for it, you know, actually.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so I guess that's discussed. So this is Brian Johnson, they're really picking up, you know, so he is going to start full-time April first as our city maintenance and water guy. So.
Well, that's, I think up to that too.
I think we discussed this last time, but I guess we, I need, we need your approval.
And this is just budget numbers of where his salary would come up and how. And I think along the way, we'll, as he gets his licensing and all of those things, eventually it's going to help subsidize his wage. So he would get paid a little bit out of sewer, a little bit out of water, and most of it out of general. So you can see, this is not an official budget. And towards the end of the year, I think we're gonna have to do a limited budget, I'm a hundred percent sure of that. And we'll adjust, this is just kind of their rise, so maybe where we could shift some things around with what's needed.
So the reason why we're putting the full-time person in is so that the maintenance can actually get done, and the sewer ponds can be taken care of, as far as mowing, cleaning the snowway, all the things that they solve that have been neglected for quite some time, we'll go through and help solve a lot of these problems.
And again, I probably didn't be that on a positive path on the full-time personally.
So is his salary column one or column two?
So it's gonna be like mixed in, like all the salaries and benefits here. So right now, I'll set it thirty-five thousand, yeah. And then you've got some.
So is Guy still here?
He is hurt, still.
A little bit hurt right now.
That's what I was going, where is Guy?
So just, just so you know, I'll, I'll explain that, so. It's a really long story, but some people know that there's been problems with the sewer department and maintenance and things like this. So, in history, so we've hired Brian to come in, and Guy actually picked Brian to, to take his place, and we're gonna start using Robert Dial to help train. He's got a contract with, with us to help do this. Anyways.
We've got, well, he's asked Guy to take a step back.
So I asked Guy to, to, to stay, take a step back, because he doesn't have a relationship with these guys. He doesn't have a relationship with FERC, neither did Larry, and everybody seemed to butt heads and couldn't work together. And so we're looking to solve some issues and problems. And this is what, and, and as I talked to Guy about that, he, he was okay with it.
He understands.
He understands, because.
So he's still gonna work with his pro.
He's gonna be around to like ask questions, try and explain things, whatever, yeah.
He's gonna continue to help plow, and just kind of whatever we need, tell him he takes over full-time. But I think once Brian takes over full-time, I think Guy will be busy doing his rough duty, so. And he understands this also, we have that conversation.
It's not a shock.
It's not a shock, it is a kid with it.
Be more of an on-call.
On-call, yes. If there's like some emergency disaster, oh, we got something happening, what do we do? And, because I don't know, and Brian may not know more or something, but he'd like to step in and help out.
So Brian had asked to kind of get a date, so that he knows when we would like him to start. And in April, I figured that's a good time, because it's in springtime, there's gonna be, start to, the ground will.
Growth.
Maintenance will start to take over, but also there's a big water conference that we signed him up to go to, that first week of April, also.
Since we had this come up under, I'm very glad, when he was here, when you had the tree come down across the canal, can't do the fence in that. One of the council people got real upset at me at the council, because Larry had me driving a tractor, and he loaded it up, and I hauled the stuff away. Are we gonna have something set up so that, like, if something happens to him, and he needs somebody, this has happened with Guy before, where I run the tractor, wow, that we're covered that way? Longest time.
I don't know the legal aspect of that, like.
I'm just putting it out to you that that's something that does happen here.
Personally, I don't think we care, but there's legal stuff.
I don't know what, what do you get mad about? Because.
Because he's not being paid by the city.
I'm not being paid by the city. And I, I was driving their equipment, would haul the tree out, and then, then I, they did pay me the one time I plowed for the city when Guy was sitting.
I mean, you can volunteer and help the city out.
Well, that's what I thought, I didn't see a problem with that. Well, that's what I thought, I didn't see a problem with that.
The only, the cap side of that is that if you get hurt, you know, so I have insurance. Yeah, well, I mean, so that's where it becomes kind of sticky, is if you get hurt, then you sue the city, and I mean, but, you know, in a small town like this.
I don't know, I, I'm okay with donating.
If we sue the city, then just raise our power bill. Yeah. We'll be fine anyway.
Well, you know, the mayor has the, the mayor has the authority to call the police, you know, for citizens to help from an emergency standpoint, so, I mean, it's.
It's a real problem, I gotta get through and come get him.
Well, the other reason I ask is I have a full set of seat keys to the city. For years.
Okay.
Well, because things.
Because I called a lot.
Yeah, things I'm gonna handle there at the council. And I actually used one of my computers, since you bought your own.
Perfect.
For that, so, you know. And Brian knows about it, obviously Guy knows about it.
He should have been mayor.
No.
It pays really good.
Who would vote for me?
Uh, not me.
Okay. That's, that one.
Okay, so that's, that's the deal with Brian, you guys are okay with starting full-time, uh, in April?
Yeah. Do we need to vote for him?
No. Can I get this, no.
That's just the mayor.
That's just an informational, I think, so, you know, like Robin's appointed, so then you guys have to approve, but he's just an employee, not just, he's an employee.
I was gonna say, I think, didn't, in the last city council, didn't they already vote to hire me?
Yeah.
And then to go full-time in the spring? This is just nailing down the date, maybe?
Yeah. So you'll find that I'm not gonna sit here and try to pick day, and I'm just gonna ask for you guys, just, just keep you informed, and if you have an opinion, that's fine.
We're gonna have to cover our votes.
Okay, next. Uh, new water and sewer operator.
Well, this is where it's gonna all start running together.
Okay, so we're gonna talk with Mountain West Works and the sewer stuff, and so if you guys are here, you wanna?
Yeah.
Okay, what do you want?
Well, I, I think we're just here to, I think, you know, Robert and a couple of my key members have reached out and kind of had a discussion. There's some changes going on, and kind of some, maybe some unhappiness, or some things that have, you know, trying to figure out what's gonna be best for the base office, we're just here to have a conversation, because things are changing, in motion, we see that.
I, I hope that I made it clear, it wasn't unhappiness, I think ultimately, for the benefit of the city, and it was offered.
That's the wrong word, sorry.
Is, is I think it's beneficial that we work with Firth.
Yeah.
Um, Robert actually offered, because he's retired, he can't charge us, so he offered to allow Brian to work under him, using his operator licenses, while he's training and getting his own. And I think that is a really nice service, plus, as we've had our living issues, I know in the past it was offered, I do not know the details of it, but Firth had offered to, if we would help them pay a maintenance fee each month, then we could send stuff to them as, in passing different places. We've kind of, we've talked about that with them. Um, see if they're still open to that, of course they are, they haven't got any details. Uh, so that way, when we have to send stuff to them, it's not a huge chunk of money all at once.
It, it's a pretty big deal to send
Yeah.
a, a chunk of sewer, so I talked to Brandon a little bit, Robert too, and I says, what do you think if we contract with you for, uh, for example, one week out of the month? And in the summertime, we don't use that as the ponds are evaporating. And then in the winter and spring, we can use those extra weeks to just go ahead and pump. Because we do wanna retain the pond levels at a certain level, because we don't wanna harm the liner, and so, so that's on the, on the list of things that we're gonna work out with them.
We want to keep our living functional.
We do want to keep everything functioning.
We need a plan B too.
We need a plan B, so, uh, as far as all that goes, it's in the works, and we want to make sure that everything's within the parameters of everything. We, we don't wanna see our guy pumping the sewer into the field, you know, we don't wanna see.
Well, and I, and I think that that kind of comes with, you know, a little bit of history with us, is, you know, we always kind of monitored that, Guy kind of took care of it, but we, you know, this, this last spring was like, we were really, you know. And so that's what we kind of said, is, is the current license holder said, okay, we have to, we have to do something here. And it's just, the pond has just never recovered, like it's just never evaporated, it should. And so I, I think it's great that you guys are having that conversation, the previous mayor was pretty adamant, we didn't discharge, and was always trying to like, you know, say, hey, we don't wanna do that, we want to try to retain it, or let's look at some other options, I know we, I talked with him about land map, and number of June, and these different things, and so, you know, I think tonight, Firth is coming to say, you know, maybe updating on what the services we can offer, and how we can help your newly operator too, I think in, in the combination with Robert.
Okay.
You know, we, we offer everything from, you know, we can do anything you want, or as little as you want, or provide one license, two licenses, we can do whatever you want.
Why not come out here with all the licensing, anything like that, so this is a learning experience.
Um, my name's Greg, for those of you, I'm actually the wastewater operator that's been kind of working on this. And so with either of your systems, whether it's water or wastewater, you need to have two licensed operators. You have a responsible charge operator and then a substitute responsible charge operator. So that's how, again, your systems are gonna work as far as what you need for a license.
So you're gonna need a responsible charge and a substitute responsible charge for the water. Uh, responsible charge, substitute responsible charge for the connection system, and then a responsible charge and a substitute responsible charge for the treatment side of things. So you're gonna need probably six licenses in that. So how, how you want, we can help you with any combination of that. And we also, you know, have a ton of experience in wells, neers, maintenance, I mean, we, we relax. Come by once a month and help out, however you guys want to structure that, we're open to this. Help you get to where you wanna go, and I'm excited to see, you know, you, you guys are, you guys are ready to go, we're here to help you, I mean, that's, that's what we want.
I think what I'm going to do is probably rely on Robert Dial to kind of help here get some of this stuff out.
Okay.
And tutor me a little bit.
Okay.
And that way I can understand, cause he's willing to do that, and, and it's, I can go there every day if I want, and check with him if it's, if that's available, so. Whatever they think, like, I think we'll just have to.
So would it be, would it be okay, maybe, if me and you and him, like, lunch or something, and, and set that one sort out?
I think so.
And if we don't have, okay, that's fine, but I want the space for you guys, and make sure that.
Well, I'm here holding.
Yeah.
I think that's fair, because, uh, maybe there's some things that he may not want to be involved with.
Brian on that one.
Yeah, no, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine. We're not trying to push anybody away, we're just trying to figure everything out, because
We're just.
I think it's kind of a mess from last year, and you guys are involved, and, and I just come in and.
I think, I think you're doing, I think you're doing the best with the situation that has, that has evolved.
It won't take long to figure it out.
No, it won't, it. Um, yeah, I think, I think that is gonna be great, I think if we all just, you know, sit down and visit, like, how we can all work together, because that's our ultimate goal.
We can all be the one.
No, absolutely, so that's great.
So what I'm, what I'm seeing is, the realistic thing is, is we're not gonna put in another pond, but we can send what we need to defer on contract, because a pond is just over not necessary for four one, I think it's four, is it two or four?
Uh, only two.
There's two, there's a third pond. Anyways. And they're really, I think they're really willing.
And honestly, we can't afford it. Look at the numbers right now.
Well.
That's a good thing.
The point is too, is when we have to send a big load to Firth, it's a, it's a huge expense, but on contract, I don't know, that we can agree to for X amount, uh, that'll be a significant difference, which the city itself can't afford.
Well, and I think part of the discussion with Firth, we need to have, and I can help you with this, but I can help you too, is that I think some of the expenses below me, because like, you know, going from not taking any to taking some, they're probably asking to adjust. And so sometimes they charge more than that, and so if we can work out something, I think the best thing, I think the discussion has been before, maybe installing like a, a metering pump, right now it's just crap.
Okay.
And so if we installed like a metering pump that said like.
I thought there was a meter.
And, well, there, there's a meter on their side, no reason.
There's a, there's a meter down near Firth, that they could say, that he's getting a metering pump, which regulates how much flow is going.
So we could say, we want this much. We set them like a, you know, a hundred gallons a minute, or fifty gallons a minute, so that they can count on that dosing twenty-four hours a day, seventy days a week.
I kind of have wondered if we could just send like a solid week, like a seven-day period, that we wanted to send a solid week to you once a month.
So as a wastewater guy, actually, it's going to be better for Firth if you can send a constant similar dose, rather than trying to do a week at a time, because they have to prep their plant to receive your wastewater, and then they change the way they operate it for that whole week that you send, and then you shut off, then they have to adjust again.
Okay.
So from a wastewater standpoint, it would be better to just send them, you know, a certain amount over a constant period of time.
I get it, okay.
So that's where, that's where I'd like a metering pump, where you could say like, instead of sending like five gallons a week, you could send possible, ten gallons a minute, say, you know.
Okay.
And then they can balance their plant, and it shouldn't be as expensive all of the time.
That's a good idea. Cause I don't understand.
No, no, and that's where I think, you know, we can sit down and have a conversation, we're together, you know, so.
Okay.
Well, we're not ready to give you the boot just yet, cause we've got seats up.
That's fine, I like details. And we're totally open to renegotiation, do you, our ultimate goal is to have you guys to train and see, that's all we're talking about.
Well, we want to do stuff right, the best we can, so we want to do.
We, we, we do too, we absolutely do too.
Okay, sounds good, is that good, you guys okay with that?
I did.
And I do have a flash drive for you.
Oh, cool.
Hi, well, thanks for showing up and sharing that, because that's good.
So you all need to, this, I don't think I have your number, you have your.
We'll check that right now.
I might be in a card.
All right, maybe, I'll just catch up to you.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay, that's that. Not really. So city rightways, okay. So this spring, I was just gonna talk to the council about city rightways along the roads, like there's a lot of cars on the side of the road, and it's not really on the owner's property, and and we just, you know, we wanna clean up base off, or, you know, we're not trying to tell you, like, clean up the yards, we're just like, hey, let's start here with this, so, uh, somehow I wanna figure out how to, if, if, if it would be okay to ask the people to, if their cars are not registered, if they're just broke down, if there's just junk on the side of the road, we need to make sure that that's cleared away, so that we can start base off, clean up purification with every one calling, because the town has been neglected for lots of years, it's just kind of declined for a while, and we kind of wanna make sure, uh, that, like a
We can test it.
Weed, junk car, like, I have old cars around my house, but I try to keep them straight, keep it clean, the weeds away, they're not on the right of way, unless we're parking and driving, they are, they're not just broke down on, in the, in the front.
So I don't think there's an ordinance that has any of these in them.
So we wanna
Do we need?
Come up with maybe.
There is a law, so you can't have a car parked in the street, it's not very.
So, so the point is.
But they have weight limits, so.
So what the point is, is we wanna see what the city council thinks about making a city ordinance to just, you know, we can't have junk cars out here.
Maybe it needs to be like registered and moved.
You know what it is, Garrett, there's a law that says you can't just have a car sitting up there, not registered.
Well, yeah, so.
But I don't know what the law is.
Well, so each city representative kind of has varying degrees of them on maintenance, obviously Blackwood's got the most details, you know, as far as weed height, and parking, and registration, and all that. But if it's not registered car, you know, they can tag it for the forty-eight hour tow, you know, if it's parked in the right ways. The, so, so you have a lot of flexibility there, you know, and obviously average is a little bit less, I mean, you know, I think each, each community has a little bit of different culture. But, so, I mean, so give us a plot, and we can, I mean, if you go clear to a Blackwood type scenario, but I think that might be a little.
No, we don't.
I just wanna, I just wanna inform all the neighbors that this is the plan, it's what we wanna do. If you need help moving it, I'll come over and help you.
We just thought, a lot of the job.
You know, we talked about doing the parking ordinances two years ago. Um, you know, and the problem was, you know, you had defined it just to the pavement versus the whole right of way, and, and um, council, I decided not to do much, you know, try and do a little more education kind of thing, but um, you know, you can go from the center of the road, you know, fall off, there's a lot of your right of way, obviously it's tough to tell where your right of way ends and where your yard starts, because your roads are much narrower than your right of ways. So, so I, this just makes you think about.
Well, I'm on screen, it's getting really narrow.
Really narrow.
But.
I just keep moving it.
The thing is, you gotta do more than just cars.
Yes, and that's what I'm talking about, city rightway.
I was gonna say, cause there's spots you couldn't run, or, or that ride over steel.
We're asking Brian to maintain and mow, so it's, it's a really long story, but, like, say, for example, uh, in the front of your house is a weed patch, and we could say, hey, on the city rightway, would you rather mow this, can we clean this up with plant grass, and then will you mow it? Or if you don't wanna mow it, can we clean this up, put a road base there, and then spray it or something, uh, so that it's cleaned up, and it's not weed infested, or, or whatever it is, at least on the city right of way. If you have, uh, junk cars or junk just blowing in, we're gonna ask that you put that in your yard. Uh, if you want to keep that, you should have that in your space, and so that the city more can come through and clean that up.
Well, you do need an enforcement section of that policy, whatever you do.
So that's what we're talking about.
And so I heard you.
To get your expense, kind of enforcement, as far as what you do?
I heard you moved your dogs tonight.
No, that was tonight, that was come on, you know, and I saw. You missed it.
So I deal with them myself, right?
Yes.
I don't know.
It's on your property, it's bothering you?
I missed it the other day, it kept running across the road in front of me.
It's in the street, finally.
Well, there's weaknesses, I can't do anything, I'm headed there.
Okay. Anyway, so Robin's gonna probably put something in the newsletter, and we're gonna just ask people to move their stuff first, and try to be that way, all approach them themselves, and just say, hey, this is what we're trying to do, uh, talk to the neighbor, see if we, we can help them move it, and, uh, I think most people are okay with it. You just kind of help them move it, you know, keep it light.
Do they need help to know where their?
Yes.
They need help to know.
So hopefully you're fairly consistent from the center of the road, I don't know if you are.
We just have to figure out where the.
Some of the roads have been placed, I mean, they, they're there, but.
The center of the road varies as far as which side is broken down and deteriorated away.
There are, there are pins in the road that you
Right.
can.
Well, and like, should, so this next one, uh, this road here, but the next one over, the pins are right, obviously, but
The road feels like this.
A hundred years ago, they put the power lines in, they're like twenty feet off.
If, if the right way is fifteen feet off the side of the road, we're just gonna say, here's the road, here's fifteen feet, let's just, let's just kind of clean this up. There's not, there's not gonna be, I guess, for a paint line, this is, let's clean this up a little bit, come on.
You might, maybe, leave it out in your newsletter, you know. It's roughly as much off the pavement here.
If a car is not registered or insured, and it's just broke down, and it's been there for a long time, let's move it somewhere, get rid of it, move it somewhere, if you love it, let's put it somewhere else. So we don't have to make.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
You should see some of our yard, our, our.
Yeah.
Well, at least, at least this is all straight.
It is straight, it's, it's not tight, you know, it has been bad, but I've cleaned it up, you know, I'm aware, nobody likes to leak at it.
You know, if you bury a nose down, maybe we'd have tourists come, and we'd come see him.
We can charge you for that.
No way we can do that. I think that's it, unless there's anything else.
That's him.
What do you think?
What, what do you mean?
What, what do you mean?
About you and your position.
I don't know, I'm just about ready to throw it in the towel.
Maybe throw it in the towel. So earlier, or last year, Larry was talking to Kay about.
He didn't mention that Kay, or he mentioned.
The possibility stepping down, so I think he's to the point where he's ready to step down. And so is that something you want to do?
But then he walked in and kind of changed his mind.
It gives him something to keep up and come in for, but you can still, you can still come in, we'll listen to you anytime. So it's up to you.
I haven't really made up my mind about it, but I've been thinking about it.
Should we call your wife? Because she was pretty sure.
Oh, no, I've got no conquer, I'm gone.
Okay, so you want more time to think about it, is what you're saying?
Okay, we'll give it till next time. So in the meantime, if you're going to think about it.
It's because we're so fun, huh?
That's right.
Well, you know, you're just.
So I'm good night.
Alright.
So do we have any other street lights that are out that?
We were just talking about that.
We were talking about that earlier. At one point, guy said, yeah, I need to call and have them come change them. So we need to call somebody.
So is that the main cause for it?
Well, our town power is supposed to come and change that.
That one on Cescro's Corner?
Yeah.
That's for years, thirty-some years, that's off and then it's on, and it's that button that's on top of it that's screwed up.
I know, I know.
They just need to replace that whole stupid light, is what they need to do.
Alan has a feeling.
Isn't there a program to upgrade these old LEDs to the new?
I know, I know the power did, I didn't know, I didn't know that power did.
You might ask on that, where these aren't yours, you're renting them.
Yeah.
If they're not, if you're renting, they have to maintain, or back on them.
Yeah, I don't like enjoying the whole, whole bunch of that, I don't want to run into them.
But Rocky Mountain, you're renting those lights, you don't own those lights, so we should do the maintenance on it if they're having problems.
We have a new city maintenance guy who I think will keep on top of.
He doesn't work on that.
He doesn't work on that, I just have to call.
The power company comes out, does those.
But also he's going to do is call and remind them, say, hey, this one this corner is this, and they can come out and service it. So that's, that'll be part of his job.
Would you like me to call and find out?
They need the number on the pole.
Yeah, that's fine.
My head looks screwed up, my project's just leaking oil.
Okay.
I also have another thing for you, you know, straight down the road, or they've been over there, but who lives there? Anyway, okay, go all the way through.
Larry?
No.
Yep.
Anyway.
The garbage dump.
Like Houston live?
Yes.
The garbage dump.
There's a branch that when there's leaves on it, you cannot see the stop sign, so.
I just said, he's completely busy.
Yeah.
Well, that used to be one hundred.
You know, I've got a friend just burned in one hundred East.
Well, it's not, you know. Eighteen, more, I think it's eighteen or something.
It's the big cottonwoods.
Yeah.
So I have a question. So we have a city maintenance, a truck in the city maintenance shop, screw camp Chevy crashed. And I'd happened without browsing through Marketplace, and I seen a sander for fifteen hundred dollars that goes on the back of the truck, so that when you apply, you go sand it all, it's not fine.
Would that be something that is?
Something interesting. Brian's going to need full-time work in this.
I do come busy.
So fifteen hundred, so they're like seven thousand dollars, this is actually a really nice one. This actual individual bought this truck with the sander on it, and then had the truck, took the sander off, sold the truck. He's got this here, and he doesn't want it, and it's actually looks very good condition, and it's like fifteen hundred dollars. And so, we don't have to make a decision today, but I think it's going to be something.
Well, I think the whole decision only comes from like having money to purchase that.
I know.
Like, you can buy it, you just have to have the funds to go pay for it.
I know, we probably. Anyways, it'd be nice to sand every corner.
It would.
Yeah, especially in motion, see how it's sliding out there.
Last one was really bad, a lot of quarter.
It would be a lot nicer if they're shoveling it out.
We have, we have a truck already that will handle the weight, and it's a perfect truck for this, and.
And Firth is going to give us a plow for it?
Firth's going to get a plow to give us for it, so.
Is that that big one that can't be used?
It's for a normal sized truck.
I don't think that's usable.
That one, we're hoping they put on the auction block.
You've got to run really fast down the road to operate that, and it's too big for city streets.
Well, we used to have a water truck that had a nice pile in it, and somebody decided to sell it.
Yeah, I don't know anything like that.
I know, if you want to hear that, that's a long time ago.
Okay, and I think that concludes our meeting.
I got a present talking to Rob earlier, didn't get it on the agenda, so this is an intro for it to be on the agenda next month.
Okay.
Dealing with the city streets, and I'll give you an example of what happened. So I got gas put into my house over there. And the Intermountain Gas sent their crews out, and they dug up on the right of way. And because the gas line ended farther towards your house, and they dug up, and they had to go out to the street, cut a path out there. Did it all in, well, when they backfilled, I'm really trying to control my temper here. Having been an operating engineer, having been a general engineering contractor, there's a proper way to backfill ditches. They did not. And my driveway, my driveway on the right of way is starting to settle in local city right of way. Because what they did is they just pushed dirt in, they got high enough where they felt they could safely run their, the wheels of the tractor up and down the trench and compact it.
So is it in the actual paved street or in the?
It's in the gravel area, in front, between this pavement and where my property line ends at my concrete driveway.
Oh, okay.
It's in that area, and it's starting to settle now. Well, and then of course, where they dug the big hole in the street, the square hole, they just kind of, they really couldn't pack it good anyways, I have a feeling that's going to fail the spring. As water gets in and everything finally settles. I would like the city to pass ordinance, whatever, that A, anytime anybody works in the city, on the city right of way, street, property, if they dig a ditch, they have to compact it using mechanical compaction with proper moisture. Then do it, in other words, spraying water, they put this up in, don't run wheel roller, that's not mechanical compaction. You either have put a, someone down, a machine down at a viber play or whatever, or one of so many rollers, and they roll it back and forth. Or on the back hole, they get what's called a sheep's foot roller, goes on the back to back hole, and then they roll it back and forth and compact it as it brings lifts up a dirt. And that has to be compacted to what is called eighty-five percent, which is the bare minimum for municipality, any municipality thing. Also, anytime they patch a part of the roadway, minimum patch thickness needs to be four inches. It's going to fail, that patch is going to fail there. And the city's going to be left to fix it because the, well, we fixed it, the pavement, then pavement, that was only four inches thick.
I was just saying, if they put four inches of asphalt, that's more than we've ever had. The only asphalt we even have in this town right here in front of this building.
It should be for a city. General city has a four inch, four inch minimum for the street pavements. Even though they did not evolve, they were doing six inches up there when they were doing stuff. We're not going to see more. No, what I'm saying is, if someone's patching it, they should patch it to a four inch minimum, that way the patch will not fail.
But it's going to be a bummer then, because all these streets here are gravel and on oil coat.
I know, I know, I'm an operating engineer. But what they do is, when they dig it out, when they dug it up, they stop, four inches of layer.
I agree with what you're saying. Because they didn't know what system that Ferguson didn't tell you anything.
Yeah, exactly.
And so we have, if you go into our district here, you'll see depression on that side of the street.
Yeah. And that's the thing, we need to make sure that things get compacted. Anywhere clean down on city property gets compacted, and that patches that easy place comes in, it's going to build a new house. And if they're going to line up, have to dig into this into the pavement, they need to take care of everything to accept a code of compaction and pavement replacement.
So when they come out to do your gas line, did they have to communicate with the city if they were going to cut into the city street?
They didn't, I don't know if they had to or not, but they didn't.
I think you have a perfect process for that.
So we can't control that unless they tell us.
If you, if you put out, have an ordinance or a code saying that any repairs, all this stuff needs to be done to these specifications, doesn't matter if they get a permit or not, you can hold them responsible for it, maybe do it right.
Okay.
And that's the thing is, because, you know, like I say, you know, it's going to start, it's already starting to settle. As we get into spring, more water gets in there, and it settles a little bit more and a little bit more.
Can you call them and say, hey?
I'm going to, I'm going to, this summer, I'm going to, I'm going to, or early, you know, May, June, I'm going to call and say, hey, you guys, your guys totally screwed up line, oh, by the way, I was videotaping the entire process, and it's on YouTube.
Okay. They are insurance bonded, so they should be able to do it right.
Yeah, but if they say the little city doesn't have ordinance on how to compact, they'll definitely have out.
These are the boards you get.
We should put an ordinance in that matches something similar to what I.
Right wing permits.
Right wing permits? So we probably ought to look at like other communities around.
Yeah.
That's fair, right, to say.
The difference is between the type of, the roadway it is, and the type of activity it are.
Yeah, and then things, on their, on their gas line, it just will push dirt back in. Any other time I worked, we had gas lines, we had to put six inches of sand over the gas line. We had to put trace pavement in there, and then go back in. They did, they just pushed on it, so I'm not sure how to keep that gas.
Here's a question, if our roads aren't to a certain thickness, can you demand them to make them a certain?
Better than it wants, your roads.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's with a reason, obviously.
So if they come in and tear up a line, they have to replace the whole section?
Yeah, they replace a little bit.
I think they're required to go back to what initially was.
They need to repair what is, usually they will, they will come in, they'll jack out, hammer out an area. But you can make it so that when they patch that area, they can have to do the four inches. Because their compacting isn't, I mean, it's.
On the weather break, so you come back and do the patch.
This was back in the summer. And they, I mean, I was talking to the crew there, they tried to wheel roller, party in my yard, you know, no, 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 this has to be jetted first. And they, they were like, what, what's jetting? These guys did not know anything about compaction. And I told them, I'll take care of what's in my yard, you need to do the same with what's out in the street, out there in front there. And I went along with my hose, jet pipe, I made it real quick, and jetted it, and it watched, and it settled, wow, that's amazing. As they watched it settle and compact. So.
We'll talk about that next week, next month.
Next one, get it out there, so, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm a little advocating about this, but it's something that, you know, the cities, other people get away with too long. And, yeah, that's one of the things that we need to take care of, stop getting that can out of the road, let the next generation back to take care of it.
Well, it's just in front of your house, it's not on mine.
Well, wait a minute, it is funny, it was just, it's just, it's funny.
Alright, someone else to call it. Call it, we got any may come up to be.
I second it.
All in favor?